Good evening. Welcome to the March 18th, 2021 meeting of the Joint Dover Sherburne Regional Sherburne and Dover School Committees. My name is Maggie Sharon and I call this meeting to order at 7:03 PM. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020. Information on how to join remote school committee meetings and meeting agendas is posted on the Dover Sherburne District website. Please note, this meeting is being recorded. Be aware that anything that you broadcast may be carried by the recording. This evening, we are gathered to determine the next step in our search for a new superintendent. We last met on this topic on Monday, February 1st, and later that week, our finalists withdrew their applications, effectively ending our initial search. Last week, our committee members attended a professional development session with Glenn Kuchar, the Executive Director of the Mass Association of School Committees. Our learning objectives for that night were twofold. First, to ensure all members understood the legal structure of our three committees and how this works when hiring a shared superintendent. Second, to educate all members as to the options before us in securing new leadership for the three school districts at this time. Since we couldn't deliberate during that professional development session, we've gathered tonight an open session to determine a future course of action. Thank you to all members of all three committees for making time for this important work and to the members of our community for joining us tonight as well. Could a member of one of our committees summarize for the public what we've learned about the structure of our three school committees in Dover and Sherburne from that professional development seminar? I see Anne. Any other hands up? I don't want to miss anybody. All right, Anne.
Hi, thanks Maggie. So Glenn did review the structure of our three committees and I'm going to do my best to review what he shared with us. So he explained that Dover, Sherburne, and Dover Sherburne Regional School Districts are separate distinct school districts. The Dover School District is just Chickering, Sherburne School District is just Pine Hill, and the regional Dover Sherburne Regional District is just the middle school and the high school. We reviewed that while we call meetings like tonight's meeting a joint school committee meeting, it's in fact a meeting of three separate entities. That in fact, the Joint School Committee does not exist as a legal entity. We are required to meet together at least three times each year, but when those meetings occur, we're meeting as three separate committees and we vote as three separate committees. So if people wonder why when we do votes in these meetings, we do it by by committee, it's because we're required to. The roll call is because we're on Zoom, but the separate votes by committee is because we are still three separate entities. So we reviewed, oh anyway, so when we do meet more than three times, are required three times, it's because we choose to act together because we believe it's what's in the best interest of our students and our districts. We reviewed our structure pertaining to the superintendent position. So when we regionalized, Union 50 was established and Union 50 is composed of three voting members from the Dover School Committee, three voting members from the Sherburne School Committee, and three non-voting members from the Regional School Committee. So if the Union 50 meets separately, all nine members need to be included. Except in the case of the removal of a superintendent, which is by a two-thirds majority, Union 50 voting is by a simple majority of Union 50 members only and is not done by individual school committee. So it's not a Dover vote within Union 50 and a Sherburne vote within Union 50, it is just Union 50, the six members of Union 50. The six, excuse me, the six voting members of Union 50. Union 50 convenes solely to hire, terminate, evaluate a superintendent and for matters pertaining to the superintendent's contract. And it's just for the two local districts. So to clarify, a superintendent is not hired by the Dover School Committee and the Sherburne School Committee is separate entities. Union 50 is the only body that can hire a superintendent for the elementary schools. The region however, can hire its own superintendent. The region is a separate entity. However, we have chosen to share a superintendent, that's the Union 50 and the Dover Sherburne Regional District have chosen to share a superintendent. When there's a vote pertaining to the superintendent position, both Union 50 and the region must have a simple majority. Because the number of voting members in both Union 50 and the region is an even number, a tie means a motion is defeated. Also to be noted is that the number of voting members in both Union 50 and the Regional School Committee is the same, it's six. Glenn also explained that when voting to hire shared administrators, a simple majority per committee is required. Union 50 does not hire shared administrators. And so I believe that the chair shared a Word doc that really explains all this. It's two pages, it includes a chart. And it explains what Glenn said and what I just repeated. And if you, if members of the committee did not get that, or if you can't find it, check with your chairs because I think that this is one of those things that we don't talk about a whole lot during the year. But when we do, it's important to understand. So if you need that, you can just check with your chairs and I'm sure that they can resend that to you. Hopefully that covered everything.
I think so. Are there any other questions from other members of the committee? And we are on now a couple of screens, so you might have to just unmute and pipe up about the structure of the school committees. Okay. So thank you for that summary. I really appreciate it, Anne. So are there? Okay, I think that's it, questions? So following last Monday's, last Mondays, I think it was, meeting with Glenn, the chairs met to determine a way forward that would respect the reality that for most of the members of our committees and certainly for our district leadership, that there's been a lot of time spent on school committee work this year and many joint meetings and other local and regional meetings. You know, we heard last Monday various procedural options that we could move forward. And we thought that we have a proposal that we think that would be good at this point. But I am interested in hearing from members of the committee, you know, are there proposals that you would like to hear before you hear ours? Or would you, would folks like us to make a motion and then we can add discussion from there?
I like the second option.
Hear the motion, then go from discussion from there. Okay, Amanda?
I wonder if it's useful just to review the options that we have going forward that Glenn outlined?
Sure. Do you want to review that for us?
I would like to hear them as well.
Sure.
I can start. I'm not sure I'll remember them all because there were a lot and it seems like there's a lot. There's a lot of possibilities. I mean, one is to hire an interim for next year. One is to and sort of create a new search process around that. One would be to go back and look at non-finalist candidates from our original pool. One would be to start a search for permanent. What am I leaving out?
There were, there were several options. He mentioned that did not involve another another search committee being formed. And that was more, I think, just internal deliberations or just deliberating in public. And, and I think there are some avenues that we haven't explored. You know, we didn't originally explore, you know, promoting from within our system. And I think it's an, an option that we absolutely should be talking about. I think we have some, some deep talks that need to happen around that. I also would prefer some cost-saving thought put into some of this. I don't want to go down another expensive search if we have good options that we can be looking at in-house.
Okay. So just, just for a point of clarification on that, you know, our contract with NESDEC. So to do an internals, like an interim search, there isn't a cost associated with that in the sense that we don't need, you know, we need to post the position, but we don't need to do a full, like the whole thing that we did before because it's considered just for like one year. And typically, the people who are looking at those kinds of jobs are, are people who are by and large retired, although it doesn't have to be that way and are looking, because we've had a search that did not come to fruition, we are able to hire someone who's retired and they are able to both collect their retirement and also to work for us, which is a perk that can only happen if you've had a, a search that didn't work out. So it doesn't require the same level of outreach. Our contract with NESDEC means that we have contracts with them that lasts until they find us a successful candidate. So it means that doing it again and using them next year, we've already paid for that. So there isn't a cost savings necessarily. And so, you know, I understand other options certainly are there. Other folks want to speak to this subject?
Glenn?
Would a, would a would an interim, conducting an interim search foreclose promoting from within?
Not necessarily.
Is that like a dual option then, promoting from within and an interim search, they happen simultaneously or is it two options melded in? So what are, I guess, what are the, what are the options? I mean, you're, you're playing a little bit of whack-a-mole, everyone. There, how many options are there? Or there, is there an infinite, infinite number that we can educate everyone on, you know, are there five options, eight options?
I mean, ultimately, there's an infinite number. You know, when we met with Glenn last Monday, I, you know, I don't know if Angie had a chance to share if there are notes from that meeting. You know, the, you know, he jokes around and he says, you know, an interim's really easy. You, you guys can get together and hire your cousin and you don't have to really do much about it. And I'm just for the record, that's, he's talking in jest. It's a pretty flexible process in terms of what the options are on the table. I think with regard to, it would be the chairs and, you know, I can offer a motion if folks, folks want to talk about it and then we can discuss it. To form an interim search committee that does not preclude internal folks from applying for that, for that position, it just means that it provides an option for other folks to do so as well. And it provides a possibility for screening interviews to happen in a not public way before we send finalists back to this full body for, for deliberation. Yep, Dennis?
I think it's important to talk about that public versus private point that you just mentioned. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Sure. I don't want to take the words out of your mouth. Do you want, did you want to say something about that? Or do you want me to talk about what Glenn shared with us?
Me, Dennis?
Yeah, it does. I just don't want to like speak to you. Dennis brings up the point and Glenn made the point. Using a, a subcommittee and a superintendent's subcommittee, which is made up of members of, you know, a small number of members of each committee, serves the purpose of allowing for folks to apply for the job and have one single screening interview in a confidential manner. Because other than that one opportunity, all the rest of the interviewing process must take place in open sessions such as this. And so for candidates who might be interested in the job, might want to have a, you know, a real candid conversation back and forth and also might not want to let everybody else in the world know that they're interested in the job before it becomes, you know, must-see TV. Having the subcommittee provides that avenue and it tends to make people more interested in applying for the job. Was that a fair summary, Dennis?
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yep, Amanda?
Sorry, I just had a clarifying question. So if we were promoting internally, that would not involve a search process, but it could involve a search process?
Correct.
Okay, just clarifying, thanks.
No problem. Any other comments?
Do we, so I guess kind of building on Colleen's point, if we, do we vote on and like if, if we think we have an internal candidate with a strong track record that could do the role, do we vote on that versus vote on getting us, I'm not, again, I'm sorry, from a process standpoint, I'm trying to understand what we're
Well, I mean, I think
the vote will be, what we're voting on tonight in terms of, you know, what Colleen brought up versus, you know, can we, you know, how do we talk about promoting within versus we're going to do a full out, a full interim search with a subcommittee?
Well, I mean, what I would submit would be a possibility is like, say, for example, you know, I know that, you know, you know, I'm looking who's on this call. Scott Kellett is a really great guy. And, and I think he's going to be like the great next person. Scott, I hope you don't mind that I see you in the middle of my screen. I'm just using you as my example. Forming an interim search committee, the search, you know, if Nancy thinks that Scott would be a great guy, Nancy could say to somebody on the search committee or to her chair, I'd really like someone to reach out to Scott and ask if that would be a job that Scott would be interested in. And if that would be the case, then there would be no reason why he couldn't go through that process. And it would be expected that people who make it through that process to the finalist stage would then do, you know, a public interview like we've got going on, you know, we've had going on in the past. So I mean, I think that's how that would happen. I think that I would always be careful, you know, saying that I think Scott should do this job because, you know, I, I haven't asked Scott and probably eating his supper and going, what the heck is going on here? Does that make sense?
Can I ask a, can I ask a clarifying question too?
Yeah, I just wondered if Nancy felt like that explanation makes
Oh, sorry.
That's right. And then certainly.
The, so you're saying that it's a little looser to hire an interim?
Correct.
If we were promoting from within, would that be less of like, it needs to be posted? And if it's a little more loosey-goosey, could we promote from within and see how things went? If we wanted to at the end of the year?
You, you could do that. I, I think that you would want to make sure before you did that, that you had the support of all the needed committees. So you would want to make sure that you would have the support of the whole Dover and Sherburne and then the region separately. And so you, you know, one of the ways that that's, you know, you can't find that out because we're an open session. And so when you're ever
So the interim search committee could discuss this option and
Okay. Correct. Yep, Anne?
Just to quickly clarify, though, I think that this is sort of taking the points or the questions from Nancy and Colleen and taking Dennis's point all together, that in fact, if you have the subcommittee, they can interview an internal candidate in executive session, which you cannot do, even if it's a looser process, you, you cannot do if we don't have a subcommittee, if it's just a full committee. So there is advantage to that too. Because, you know, that that allows you to ask some of the questions and figure out some stuff and have a more open conversation potentially than you would have opportunity to have in a public session. So there is just, there's just value in that too.
Angie, I see. Oh, Dennis and then Angie.
Can we just clarify on this concept of a looser process? That sounds as though we're just
It's not, yeah, it's not actually
Can we kind of put some framework on what we mean by it's different?
That's a perfect thing. It's not a looser process. It's typically a more streamlined process in the fact that you don't, for an interim, like one-year appointment, do the level of community engagement that you would do for a permanent type three-year contract. So you don't, for example, necessarily have days where you're meeting with groups of various stakeholders. You generally have the person, you know, go through a screening process if you're using a search committee, forward a couple finalists for, to this body to be interviewed. Have those finalists also be interviewed by or speak with the district leadership team in, in some fashion so that folks have been able to, you know, meet the folks, figure out what they think, have an opportunity to give their feedback to us. And then we have to individually review that feedback and then in public vote on where we'd like to move forward with. So it's not looser in the sense that it's the same basic bones. Just typically, when you're going to hire a permanent superintendent, you are spending a lot of time really trying to get families out, folks to come to the Zooms, people to come to, to focus groups because it's really important when you're going to be, you know, with somebody for a long time to make sure that everyone's had a chance to weigh in. Does that make sense? Okay, Angie?
And the only thing too is I want to be able to understand because our Colleen, when she said, you know, and then at the end of the interim, you know, if it was an internal and then promote up, the thing is, is if we're doing like a regular search too, that would have to happen before, you know, May of next year or June of next year, whenever the interim thing's up. Because if we get to the end, you know, you, you just have to make sure that you have a body in the seat too. So, you know, we have to make sure that we've timed everything correctly.
All right. Um, do I have anyone who would like to make a motion? Angie? I'm muted. So given all of our options, I, I guess what I'm thinking is to try to streamline and no matter where this takes us, we, we need to have a committee is my feeling. So I would like to make a motion and I will do it by my committee to appoint one member from the Sherburne School Committee, one member from the Dover School Committee, and two members from the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, which is one from each town, and create a interim superintendent search team as a subcommittee of the joint committee for the purpose to facilitate the process of selecting an interim superintendent for the districts. So do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
And then do I have a second?
For all of the committees or?
No, it's just We'd have to do it by district. And so if we don't come to an agreement on this one, then somebody's going to have to come up with another motion of what you want to propose.
So again, this is just Sherburne that Angie is speaking to.
Yeah, yeah.
A second.
Okay. And now that being said, is there any discussion? And remind you, if there's something that you want answered, clarified, that's what the, so Robert's Rules of Procedure, which to me is wonderful and very, also very convoluted. So if there's anything you want to discuss, any questions you have, now is the time before Sherburne were to vote on it. Amanda?
So is it only Sherburne people that ask questions or can anyone ask questions? So I guess my question is if I would want that committee to be informed by the thinking of our whole group. And I just wonder how we ensure that that happens.
Well, it's, it's going to be, can I answer this Maggie? So it's going to be, yeah, the, it's the same as like the, any search committee. So the representative would, you would, you would tell your representative of your own group, you know, this is what I, I foresee or this is a question I have. And then it's incumbent upon that person to go to the subcommittee and to either bring the issue to them or to have the discussion with them. And then you, you report back or then we bring it to the broader group. So it's, it's not that these four people are doing the will of the four people. What it should be is this person that's representing your group should be your mouthpiece. So they're going to be your, your middle person going back and forth. Because if not, then all 16 of us or 15 of us, how many of us there are is going to have to make sure we can all meet at various times. So that, I mean, it's, it's, it's more of a, a timing issue more than anything and trying to make sure that we can get it done. But that's not to say that, I mean, you're, they're the screening part and you know, they, that's, that's really what it is. It's just like Dennis, for instance, was part of screening with the community, the broader community with our superintendent search.
Right.
So he brought community interest. Go ahead, Dennis.
So I've kind of two points for discussion. The first, just to make sure that I'm understanding correctly and kind of gotten into the record that if we are forming this interim search committee, that it is expressly clear that that is open to both internal and external candidates. So that would be point one. I think that that's stating the obvious based on sort of the conversation over the past 20, 25 minutes or so, but I think that that needs to be clear to however this is communicated out and advertised. So that'd be point one. And point two, I think, building on some of the discussion that I think is related to that is one of the points that Glenn had mentioned in the discussion that we had with him in that education session was that when you're creating interim position, if for instance, there was somebody internal that was promoted in, the typical process was whatever role that that individual previously filled would become an interim as well because it is only for a specific period of time. And then at the point that that interim position was done, things would kind of flow back to as they were prior to the interim position being, being created. So I just wanted to make sure that that was clarified and maybe even confirmed that my understanding of that was correct based on our conversation.
That, that's my understanding. Am I understanding it correct for the rest of you that were in workshop?
Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
Okay. So Dennis, yes, you did, that, that's a good point to make and thank you for clarifying.
And then third point, I think I prioritize sort of clearly and openly discussing these options. I appreciate that there is some value in having a executive session process to allow for some anonymity to protect folks' privacy, but also to enable sort of the the most expansive candidate pool possible. It seemed in my sort of interpretive this that many of the folks who potentially externally would be going for this interim position, this is kind of their gig and, and I think discretion doesn't sound like it's as important, at least from an internal or from an external perspective, but may be so internally. So I think that the, the team that is comprised or the committee that is comprised needs to consider and think about that as they're executing their role.
I agree. No, that's a good point. Is there any other thoughts from my committee? Those of you I can see, I think I can see everybody on my screen. Okay, so having finished our discussion and our, our points, can I do a roll call vote then? We've had a first and a second. And I'm going to hold the members for a yes or a no vote. I will start with Megan.
Megan Page, yes.
Amanda?
Amanda Brown, I guess I'm not quite ready to vote, so I guess I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
I think I want to hear more discussion.
What should we do with that? I guess we'll do, well, it doesn't matter if I get a majority, so. You know. Dennis?
Dennis Quan, yes.
Nancy?
I'm in the same camp as Amanda.
Okay. And Angie Johnson, yes. So Leslie, we'll turn it to you and let your committee.
Okay. Do I have a motion to appoint one member from the Dover School Committee, one member from the Sherburne School Committee and two members from the Dover Sherburne Regional School Committee, one from each town to create an interim superintendent search team to serve as a subcommittee of the joint committee for the purpose of facilitating the process of selecting an interim superintendent for the districts? Do I have a motion?
Mark Healy, so moved.
Do I have a second? Can you take yourself off mute, Sarah?
Sorry, I was trying. You're a good chairperson, second.
Do we have any discussion?
I just, I wanted to just mention something that Glenn mentioned, which is that often in districts, you know, the structure is you don't always have to do a superintendent search. When there's an opening in that role, you often hire assistant superintendents to, with the intention that they're going to be mentored in their position and then promoted. promoted. And then you're hiring assistants. And so I just wanted to make a point that in our future hiring, as we look down the road, um, I think that that's an important point. You know, this is not an inexpensive search. And if in our hiring practices, we do so with the intent of hiring within, I I would recommend that to the district.
Thank you, Colleen. Liz, go ahead.
I just wanna piggyback on that. Like, I I agree with Colleen. I hope that going forward, we could be thoughtful and strategic in how we're hopefully building some sort of an infrastructure that um our district is preparing people to move up through the system i- if it's um appropriate.
I agree, and I appreciate both comments. Anyone else on Dover? Yeah, go ahead, Colleen.
I have a a question about the um whether the interviews will be done via Zoom. Again, I that I'm assuming that's Zoom for the private interviews. Um, but will there be a section where there's public interviews or a chance to meet the candidates? I just, I had some issues with not having face to face um with someone we were hiring into such an important position. Um, and I'm wondering if that, the opportunities for face to face will be um different, if we have any idea about.
I would like to speak on that, and I'm sure Maggie and Angie will as well, but that is, of course, up to Board of Health and the Governor's Guidelines, but given that the weather is turning, I would assume that we would have the possibility to meet with them outside if nothing else.
And I I would, I would, I would absolutely agree with that. Um, I think certainly in terms of um, you know, having a time for, you know, at least a couple finalists or, you know, a finalist, whatever comes out of this this particular search um to meet with the district leadership and um, you know, obviously come to campus. We, the the problem is that we cannot gather as a quorum um without an open meeting. So, you know, it needs to sort of conclude with this type of meeting in the, in the meeting where, you know, public and everybody can kind of see. But that doesn't mean that we cannot um organize small group conversations with potential candidates that would be in person um on that day. There's certainly a lot of creative ways to work around that.
Yep.
I think last time where the children were not at school, it was easier because we had an empty campus to work with. It'll be a little more challenging. But I know that there's ways that we can work that out. I think it's really important, to your point, I think meeting people um face to face is a really big deal in this process.
I'd like to see that happen in this process. I I definitely.
We'll start working on our Board of Health friends now.
Any other discussion from Dover? Sarah, go ahead.
So just to kind of restate what I'm hearing from the group to make sure that I'm understanding kind of where we are headed as a collective consensus. Um, it sounds as though, you know, the reality of the nature of the super interim superintendent um hire is that the process needs to be a bit more streamlined in terms of, you know, we we have a certain amount of time where we need to make this decision. It's less obviously than the process that began in October, but the process that was begun then really paved the way because we developed a candidate profile, we conducted focus groups, we got a really good understanding of what our community is looking for. And hopefully that's um what we will be able to achieve in an interim and then eventually a a permanent hire. So that being said, I'm hearing that this this smaller subcommittee would serve as a screening committee to review applications, conduct a screening interview, and then essentially turn it over again to the entire three school committees to conduct a public interview that would be able to be viewed by the entire community. And that there would also be an opportunity for um administrators um and 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 uh teachers to um participate in in some kind of session with those finalist applicants as well. Is that?
I would say that you nailed it. Uh, um, any of the chairs want to weigh in? I'd say you said it very eloquently, Sarah, and I appreciate you.
And that's what I was trying to say before when I was trying to answer the question, but it was a better answer. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you for that, Sarah. Any other discussion? Okay. Um, can I have a roll call? Could all the Dover members take yourself off mute? Sarah Gutierrez done?
Gary Gutierrez done, yes.
Mark Healy?
Mark Healy, yes.
Liz Grossman?
Liz Grossman, yes.
Colleen Burt?
Colleen Burt, yes.
And Leslie Leon, yes. I am gonna hand it over to you, Maggie.
Okay. We'll read the motion again. Um, I am inviting a motion um to appoint one member from the Dover School Committee, one member from the Sherburne School Committee, and two members from the Dover Sherburne Regional Committee, one from each town, to create an interim superintendent search team to serve as a subcommittee of the joint committee for the purpose of facilitating the process of selecting an interim superintendent for the district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Judy Miller. Motion made. Do I have a second?
Kate Potter, second.
Kate, thank you. Um, seconded by Kate Potter. Is there any discussion? Glenn?
Uh, one question. So the interim search team does not necessarily need to the permanent search team and the interim search team are not necessarily the same team.
Yes, they're totally different teams. And in fact, that's a great question because some of you who received multiple agendas for tonight might have noticed that originally, you know, we're, we we were trying to be efficient with everybody's time and thought maybe we're gathering here as a group, we ought to appoint both of these teams because they are different teams and and they have different purposes, right? Um, at the same time, um, and that seemed efficient. And then um we remembered, and actually Leslie remembered, that um there's an election coming up. And so the cast of characters that are here tonight might not be the same. And it seemed that the most um fair and equitable thing to do, rather than um, you know, it's not that we want to hold up a permanent search committee. We want that group to have a long runway to do all the work they want to do. But um, but that we ought to do it with the members who are elected as of, you know, mid-May, when both towns have their elections for the next term. So that, you know, those folks are the ones who have that. So there's an expectation that there, and and you know, typically in the longer search committees, those have a larger membership, right? Like those have a membership of maybe more people from the, you know, you just have to be under the quorum. And obviously, as Dennis experienced, you know, community members join that search team, you know, parents and so forth. Um, and it's really just a matter of, you know, we would, it would be great if we could have a candidate hired before May. And, you know, that's a big, that's a big ask in terms of people's time and and, you know, organizing stuff. Does that answer your question?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
I'd also like to state, I I think that what we would ultimately try to do is make that one of our first agenda items on our next JSC following the election.
I I, yeah, I would agree. I think it should come right with like reorganizing and, you know, all that stuff. Go right on that agenda.
Amanda? Sorry, Maggie.
I don't know if I can ask a question or not because I'm not region, but I just had a clarifying question to land. So.
Yeah.
Is it? Is it a, um, if we have an interim search, we have an interim. Um, we like the interim. Is a superintendent search necessary, or can we just promote that interim to a permanent?
I think that's one of the questions that you'd want to have later. Um, I I I, I mean, I I don't know if I would be here after, but y- you would. I I think you wouldn't want to not form the committee, but I and and I want to vote on this for my committee and then we can certainly talk about that at a future meeting, I would say. Does that sound fair?
Yeah, I was just trying to make sense in my head, like if that was a, just a fact that we were gonna need two committees or not.
I I think it's a likely fact. I, you know, how the group decides to proceed from there is is sort of two separate issues.
Yeah, and and Amanda, I think that's a really good question, but we really need, we're actually supposed to focus on the motion that's on the floor, and then we can table that and even get after to that if we want to after we've had our vote. But because we have a motion, we've got to conclude that before we can enter into any other discussion. Is that okay, Maggie? Sorry, jumped in.
No, I, that's totally fine. I don't like to always be the bad guy.
No, I'm not.
All right.
The bad guy, I'm just clarifying.
Yes, no, that's all right. Um, any further discussion from, I should have been clearer, from the regional school committee? Okay. If you can take yourselves off mute, we'll do a roll call vote. Kate Potter?
Yes.
Lynn Collins?
Collins, yes.
Judy Miller?
Judy Miller, yes.
Anne Hovey?
Anne Hovey, yes.
I've lost my screen. Am I it? Or did I miss somebody on my screen? Okay, Maggie Sharon, yes. Um, all right. That concludes um this part of the meeting in terms of forming the search committee, but we need to appoint members. My understanding from our meeting with Glenn is that's a um a job of the chairs to appoint their members. Uh, Angie, did you want to appoint somebody?
I do, but um, so so I actually had all of my members express interest. And so, but I kind of went in order of when they contacted me. And Amanda was, Amanda Brown was my first contact person. So Amanda, as long as you're comfortable with doing it, you are my person. Um, I I have it in order. I kept a a running list. So I was just happy that everyone responded, so thank you. So Amanda Brown um would be the Sherburne designate.
Leslie?
So I also had a few members express interest, and I would like them to perhaps take themselves off mute and work out which one of them would like to be on the committee.
I I would like to vote for Sarah.
I would like to second Sarah.
Sarah, are you okay with that?
I I I would be happy to do it. Um, I I trust and respect the views of everyone on my committee, so I would be happy to see any of you do it as well. But yes, if it's the will of the committee, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, great. So for Dover, it will be Sarah Gutierrez done. Thank you, Sarah, for stepping up.
Thank you.
And I think another thing to keep in mind is should we have another committee as one of the first things we do after we organize? There'll be a lot of room for for us to to be involved in that as well. All right, I need a person from Dover and a person from Sherburne. Um, unlike you, Leslie, um, it was not, it was not as many people beating down the door. Um, I, Kate Potter had offered to work on this team. Kate would still be interested in doing that.
Sure.
Is that okay? Um, is our representative from Sherburne? Um, and then Lynn, I understand that your basket was full and that you might be interested in a future search team, but but while we're here in public, i- is there, would you, I want to make sure if you want to do this, you have an opportunity. Are you okay not to do it right now?
I'm pretty cool not doing it right now.
Okay, um, I will fill that seat for um the, for Dover. Um, so it seems like we have a team. Um, we we can organize ourselves, I think, obviously offline. Um, but um Leslie or Angie, do you have any um time goals or what you would like to see in terms of how we work this out for time? Um, or open, or what what are you thinking?
I mean, I just, you know, our runway is getting shorter, so time is of the essence. Um, you know, but I think you all can organize and do it expeditiously.
Okay.
With getting everyone back in school as we are, so just.
I agree. I think everyone knows time is of the essence, so.
Okay.
I I would love to see it by the beginning of May happen. Uh, as extend an offer to a candidate.
Okay. All right.
Agreed.
Um, so once the ISSD.
Nancy wants to speak.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, me actually, yeah.
Oh, thanks, Maggie. One quick question on the candidate and like, I know the search is not as exhaustive, obviously, as the permanent search, but will we have an understanding of the strategy of the type of person you're looking for to fill this role?
That's a perfect question because what I was gonna say is uh, once the ISSD has been able to meet and create a timeline, um, we would return to the chairs in order to set dates for needed meetings. One of those meetings could be if if there's a will of the committees, you know, we do have sort of our charge from the last one, right? But we might decide if there might, if there was any desire on the part of either members of the committees at large or the ISSD to change that charge in some way, we would need to come back to the committees and meet in this session to look at that profile and and vote on it. Um, so that would be a meeting that we would need to have upcoming, like in the next week probably, so that we can kind of move from there. Um, at that point, you know, we need to advertise, that can be done through um, you know, Massey, through schools, through the normal ways that you do it. Um, and and then, you know, schedule interviews and schedule, you know, whittle it down to finalists and or finalists or finalists, and then move through this process. Usually a finalist isn't always the favored way just because people feel like, what what are we doing this for? But um, but, you know, depending on, you know, what's available and 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 who steps forward. Does that answer the question? All right. Any other items for discussion tonight? Yep, Anne?
Can I just really quickly go back to Amanda's question?
Yes.
Um, to make sure that that we address that. So I apologize, Amanda. Was it, you were asking that would they be two separate, I forget, oh, one, if you could have an interim continue?
Yes, yeah, without, without having to start it. Like, if we're, if we're happy, um, everyone loves this person, can we just carry on and appoint them to the permanent position without having another search? So I was just wondering if we were putting car before the horse by organizing a committee, if we might not need such a committee, but I guess we might not know that for a while.
I think that's like a little bit of the catch twenty-two, is that you might not know that for a little while. And if you don't do a search and then you figure out in the spring that that's not such a good workout plan, then you're, it's like tricky. But if you do a search and if the candidate that's there applies for the search and goes through it, you can wrap that up and then kind of move forward from there, which t- tends to have a more stable way, although it is, it has the downside of being more time consuming for the people along the line. Any other? Yep, Dennis?
Yep. Um, so just kind of hitting on what Nancy had mentioned earlier, um, we obviously have that candidate profile and and all of that stuff, but I'm assuming that this um interim search committee is gonna get moving relatively quickly. Um, and Maggie, I think you'd suggested maybe a meeting in the not-too-distant future to talk about the will of these three committees. And is there anything that we think would be important to add, append, or adjust to what it is that we're looking for? Does anybody have anything now to start that process, or is it better served to wait for a separate meeting so folks can think about it? I'm I'm conscious of time for these these folks to uh to kind of pull this stuff together. So if we have time here, is there anything that we wanted to raise?
I guess, very, very quickly, I get, I can keep it brief or not talk at all, is um, you know, we do have the profile, but I was thinking because it's short term, it's the gaps that we need. Um, the gaps in leadership, you know, it's it's really more strategic and tactical of what we need this person to do, not so much fill the shoes of that big profile. So it is a different um view into what we're looking for, I think, to fill what we need for the short term. So that's, that's why I was asking what the strategy was, if it was kind of that, if that was the kind of slice we were gonna take, because I think that to me is the right, i- or is a way to go forward to make sure we're just, you know, filling the gaps until we get a permanent person.
I I don't disagree. Anne, can you help, just from the history of school committee searches, because I didn't keep my notes in front of me? Um, committee is formed. If committee creates or needs to help create a new candidate profile, is there an opportunity to do that in executive session, or is that an open session? And is that two meetings or three meetings in terms of create the profile, right? You know, do we remember, does anyone remember offhand that process?
It's an open session. There's nothing about that that could be an executive.
Okay.
Um, and how many do it in is completely up to us. We could do it in, one, the search team could put together something, share it with the committees ahead of time, and then we can hammer it out in one meeting. If that's, but you could also do it over two if that's what we feel like we need.
Feels like for expeditiousness, if that would work and would be sort of amenable to folks, that that might be a good plan so that we could schedule a meeting in a short period of time. The team would do the work beforehand, solicit people's ideas, create a document, and then we could hash it out. Would that feel like a fair plan? See some nodding?
Is the solicitation of ideas conflicting against the open meeting?
That's, I don't think so, as long as it's a one-way solicitation, as long as it's, you send your ideas to your team member. It's not like, there's like a group. It's not like, there's like a group chat about, or like a Google Doc that everyone's chatting about. I think you sending your ideas to your representative on that committee is totally reasonable.
Yep, yep. And the committee member can't respond, they can respond back, "Thank you," but they can't respond back. What do you mean by this? It's just a straight out, it is what it is.
Yep, Amanda?
I would just put out there that I think we, we created a really beautiful candidate profile. And I feel like that really captures what we want and need in our district. And so I, I would be in favor of just going, running with that one. And I understand your point, Nancy, about gaps, but I think that we can, I think any candidate would have, you know, any candidate is going to have strengths and weakness, relative weaknesses. And that candidate profile, I think, captures still everything that we're hoping for in a candidate. I thought that was really a good, a good snapshot of what we want.
Sarah, and then Judy?
I completely agree with Amanda. I think that that candidate profile was not only a reflection of the school committee's desires for our next superintendent, but our communities as well. That was the product of focus groups that were conducted with, you know, various stakeholder groups. And I think we would be wise not to reinvent that wheel because we want an interim that meets as many of those values as, as we can have.
Judy?
Yeah, respectfully, I disagree with both Amanda and Sarah. I think that we need, we have, no, let me rephrase that. I love the candidate profile. I thought it was beautiful, okay? But I think that in an interim candidate, we have different needs. And particularly during this year that's coming up, which is going to be a transition year. Our kids will stop, probably still be wearing masks at school, but most of us will probably be vaccinated. Hopefully, the numbers will be low and hopefully, everybody will be healing emotionally. But that's going to take some time and what school going to look like in the fall. And so, and, and, you know, and also, we need to think about what we need because this is our, or let me rephrase that, we need to think about whether our needs for the coming year are different because this is an interim position everyone's spoken about, or several people have spoken about. Is there an internal candidate who we might, you know, promote, you know, at some point? And so I think we really want to think critically about our, we need to consider whether our needs are different now for this search and at this time than they were the la, for the last search.
I think what I'm hearing is different people have different opinions about this, which leads me to think that it would be wise to reconvene, to let the ISST members collect feedback from their members about what your thoughts are about an interim, knowing that it's highly likely that we will do a search for a permanent. And I, I mean, I'm also a very big fan of candidate profile original. And I feel like for a permanent job, that definitely, that, that we should go with that. We worked hard to make that. And I don't know, I'm, I'm a big fan. But, um, but I think one way or another, we're not ready to marry that based on what I'm hearing tonight. But Colleen?
Yep. Yeah, I, Dennis mentioned addendum, so like adding maybe an addendum. I don't think that we need to make our candidate profiles smaller or pare it down for next year. I think that's, you know, that should be our basis. Our core values are there. But, which we would want anybody leading our district, especially at a difficult time. But can we add an addendum for, you know, some things that we are looking for in this interim position? I also wanted to ask about this, the district's strategic plan, which is up this year. Is that right? We're redoing that this year. It was in an 18 to 21, what were the years it was for? So does that move forward if we have an interim? Are we able to do that work? That's something someone mentioned at one point, being why an interim wasn't the first choice.
Yep, Anne?
So there has been some discussion, maybe it was just at the region, where because of COVID and so many of the things, some of the things on the strategic plan were addressed, but so many things were not able to be addressed that the administration, from what I recall hearing, the members of the administration felt comfortable with continuing that on next year because there was still plenty of meat left on the bone to, to address. So I, I feel relatively comfortable. We're actually, that's a nice situation because oftentimes with an interim, which is sort of the other point I really wanted to make quickly, the goal of an interim is, is different. They're often hired to just keep the ship going, just keep you moving forward. They're not really, they're not generally going to undertake any major issues. They'll keep going, keep whatever we're already doing, like DSA would continue, but we wouldn't necessarily start a new initiative under an interim. So just sort of keep that in mind too when people are thinking about what they would like an interim to do versus what interims really tend to do as part of their job description.
I, I guess what I would add is that this is a situation where we do have a lot of really strong leadership and instructional leadership already in place in the district. And whether it means that we spend this year building on the current strategic plan and beginning to collect information towards the next plan's vision and, and mission. I, I mean, I, I think it's worth a discussion of this body for another night, but I think the work that was done by Ms. McCoy and her team with Portrait of a Graduate is a great basis of a future vision and mission. And I think that Ms. McCoy is very strongly poised to start the process of strategic planning, whether, you know, an interim is there or not. And so, you know, luckily, strategic plans are over a long term. And for those of us who are around for a long time, we didn't have any for so long that, that, you know, whether we stretch it a little bit and pick it up, or whether we start the, you know, hey, these are the beginning foundations of where we need to go for the next five or six years. I think that work will continue. Amanda?
Yeah, I was thinking, Judy, something you said made me think. I think that this is an argument for an internal candidate because the job, I think, of whoever's in that role this coming year is going to be to help the community heal. Students, staff, community. And I think that it would be, and I think maybe I have my teacher hat on now, thinking about how it's hard to have someone from the outside coming in who hasn't been part of that experience with you. And, and hasn't been a part, and you know, is, is sort of coming in knowing what everyone's been through and can help move everyone forward. So that's just a thought I had in relation to what Judy said. And I think that it touches on what Colleen was, was talking about.
All right. What I am hearing is a general will to have at least a brief meeting, whether it's to keep the, the meat of our, our superintendent profile with an addendum of what are the characteristics we would specifically need in an interim, one way or another, that has to come back before us. I, I, I think just in the interest of time, Leslie and Angie, are you okay if we poll the members for a meeting probably sometime next week, where we would look at that profile and approve it?
Maggie, can we, oh, we can't do it on the 23rd because that's not a meeting. It's a, it's a PD, right?
Have the, we have our, and just so everyone has their calendars booked, we are booked from seven to nine with a professional development seminar with Francie Latour and Bruce. And I have to send out, I got information from them today and you're reminding me, I have to send it out to all the members because it includes a, a pre-work survey that they need you to do tomorrow. So please do that. I will get that out to you after this meeting. It's only like three questions. It's not that many questions. So, you know, we could meet, if that works for people, before 7:00 PM, like at 6:00 PM. We just, we have to have a hard stop to go into our seminar at seven. Does that feel like a good plan?
I think that's ideal. I have to ask.
That's next Monday, correct?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Okay, so that gives us time to post it. That's why I'm thinking about it. So if we met next Tuesday at 6:00 PM, understanding that we have a hard stop at 6:55, so folks can, you know, use the bathroom and then go to our professional development center, I think that would be a very reasonable idea, like nodding head, sound okay? It's a long night. You can, you can eat our noodles next to our computers. All right. So we'll get ourselves organized between now and then. Please send any feedback, thoughts about a profile, stuff you want to do to your representative. And we will meet beforehand and kind of cull that into something that we could use to have a discussion about and hopefully approve before we start that session. Okay? All right. Do I have any other business that, that folks have? I'm wondering if I, yep, Lynn?
I'm mulling over where in the process it would make sense, but is, would it? I would like to have feedback from the educators on what specifically they think is important in an interim role. And I assume that, that that's something everyone else would be interested in as well. And so where in the process would that be?
I, I think, I think we can probably, with Cheryl's help, put a survey out to the faculty.
And would that be before we meet, or would that be baked into the, the subcommittee's sort of mission?
I think we probably, knowing the life of a teacher, and Liz, you can definitely weigh in on this. I think probably we need to give people a longer runway than if we write the survey over the weekend and need the survey results back by Tuesday. I think we probably could expect to get, you know, work with administration to put something out and give people a week or so to, to fill it up. Yep, Anne?
Really quickly, and I'm, we can choose to have whatever input we want, just sort of as a historical reference. When we hired the interim last time, we did not, we allowed, we had the teachers come and meet the finalists, but they didn't participate in the prep process because we, they participated so thoroughly in the process for the original search. We can choose to do whatever. I'm just providing that as sort of historical background.
Yep, Liz?
Speaking as a teacher and having gone through this where I work, I think being as inclusive throughout, if possible, is like, it's, it's really a nice thing to have your voice heard, especially if this is your future boss, personally speaking.
Fair enough. Sounds like a good suggestion. All right. If there is no further discussion, can I invite a motion to adjourn?
Let's move on. Move the motion.
And though we have to do it through our whole committees, actually, we should probably just pull through our whole committees. So Leslie, do you want to take care of that for the, for the?
Yep. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second?
Second.
Can I just have a raise of hands?
Okay.
Angie?
I have a motion to adjourn from the Sherburne School Committee.
Moved.
It's no move. Do I have a second? Second, Nancy? And just by a show of hands, unless there's any discussion, but I don't think there is a show of hands to. Thank you.
Anne, for the region, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Lynn Collins, so moved.
Thank you. Second, Kate Potter. Show of hands? All right. Good night, everyone. This meeting is adjourned at 8:06.